Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing for the State Road 297 Pine Forest Road Project Development or PDNE Study, the segment of State Road 297 from south of I-10. The State Road 10 and County Road 297 and State Road 10 and Bullitt County Road 297A in Escambia County, Florida. Financial management project numbers 441-056-3 and 441-056-3. Your experience in audio or technical difficulties, please contact technical support at Amanda dot Hanley at AtkinsGlobal.com. In the event of technical difficulty during the open house or the public hearing, please stay online while we work this obviously. My name is Alan Van, and I will be moderating the public hearing for the State Road 297 PDNE Study on behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation. We thank you for your interest in this project. Nicole Arant, the project manager of this PDNE study, is overseeing the hearing in-person location at the North Stone Baptist Church in Pensacola, Florida. We are both being supported by representatives of the FDOT District 3 consultant team. We would also like to take a moment to thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrated public hearing presentation. Thank you.
The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the State Road 297 Project Development and Environment or PDNE Study. Financial management project numbers 441-056-2 and 441-056-3. In addition to the PDNE staff here tonight, a representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding business relocations on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we start the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this meeting through GoToWebinar. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one shown on the right side. To listen to the meeting, your computer's device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select phone call in the control panel and dial in using the information provided. All virtual and phone-in attendees will be placed in listen-only mode for the duration of the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those submitted at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from the in-person meeting will be addressed first. Verbal comments during the online registration will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided during registration and unmute you. When the microphone icon is green, you are ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon stays orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once, and it will notify you that you are unmuted, and then you can provide your comment. You will not be on camera at any time if you join online during the public comment period after the formal presentation. In-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. If you dialed into the public hearing by telephone, your phone was automatically placed in listen-only mode and will remain in listen-only mode throughout the public hearing. Those attending in person and virtually may make a public comment when called upon. A recording of the webinar will be available at the project website three days after the public hearing. You can also call the FDOT project manager after the public hearing to request additional project information. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at the Office of American Consulting Professionals LLC, located at 4489 Woodbine Road in Pace since November 17, 2022, and will continue to be available at this location until December 29, 2022. Individuals wishing to view the documents at American Consulting Professionals should contact Deborah Turner at 850-289-1006, or email dturner@ACP-fl.com to schedule an appointment. You may also view project documents tonight at this public hearing and online at the website shown on the screen. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvement, its conceptual design, alternatives under consideration, and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for the members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. This study satisfies the National Environmental Policy Act and other policies, regulations, and procedures. There are three primary components to tonight's hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation, where you were invited to view the project displays, to speak directly to the project team, and provide your comments in writing or to the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both adverse and beneficial, and proposed methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. Third, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide oral statements at the microphone, or you may provide your comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal and state environmental laws and pursuant to 23 United States Code Section 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between the Florida Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration, signed on May 26, 2022. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised in the Pensacola News Journal, the Florida Administrative Register, and was noticed consistent with federal and state requirements, as shown on the slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the FDOT District 3 office or the Tallahassee office. This contact information is displayed on the screen, at the sign-in table at this hearing, and in the project handout. FDOT is conducting a Project Development and Environment or PDNE study for this project. The PDNE process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative utilizing a continuous community outreach process to ensure all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. The virtual project update was held on February 22, 2022. Following this public hearing, FDOT will continue to advance the project to the design phase, which is funded in fiscal year 2023. Neither the right-of-way phase nor the construction phase are currently funded. FDOT is evaluating conceptual improvements on State Road 297 from south of Pine Forest Drive to Nine Mile Road, shown in green, and on County Road 297 from Nine Mile Road to north of County Road 297A, shown in blue, a distance of approximately 1.36 miles excluding the limits of the I-10 interchange at Pine Forest Road, which was studied under FPID The limits of that project are shown in purple. The purpose of this project is to improve traffic circulation, enhance safety, and reduce congestion on State Road 297 from south of Pine Forest Drive to north of County Road 297A in Escambia County, Florida. Enhancing these facilities will help to provide additional capacity and mobility on this important north-south route in western Escambia County. The widening of State Road 297 and County Road 297 from three to four lanes from Interstate 10 to County Road 297A are identified in the Needs Plan and Cost Feasible Plan of the Florida Alabama Transportation Planning Organization, or TPO, Long Range Transportation Plan for 2045. In an effort to improve safety, FDOT is proposing the following primary changes: capacity improvements, which include widening State Road 297 to six lanes south of I-10, and widening of State Road 297 to four lanes north of I-10; intersection improvements at Pine Forest Drive, Nine Mile Road, and County Road 297A; side street improvements at Pine Forest Drive East and West, Shelly Road, and County Road 297A. We will now discuss each of these proposed improvements included in the preferred alternative. We will first look at the capacity improvements, which include widening to six lanes south of I-10 and widening to four lanes north of I-10. State Road 297 south of Pine Forest Drive is currently a four-lane divided roadway with four-foot paved shoulders. The two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction are separated by a 30-foot median. Widening will occur to the outside to add an additional travel lane as well as a five-foot shoulder, also serving as a bike lane in each direction. Curb and gutter will be added along both sides of the roadway. A 10-foot shared-use path will be constructed on the southbound side, while a six-foot sidewalk will be constructed on the northbound side. State Road 297 north of Pine Forest Drive is currently a four-lane divided roadway with four-foot paved shoulders. The two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction are separated by a 22-foot median with inside curb and gutter. Widening will occur to the outside to add an additional travel lane as well as a five-foot shoulder, also serving as a bike lane in each direction. Curb and gutter will be added along the outside shoulder of the roadway, while a raised concrete median will be constructed in the middle. The 10-foot shared-use path will continue on the southbound side, and a six-foot sidewalk will continue on the northbound side. The existing roadway along State Road 297 north of I-10 and County Road 297 is an asymmetric four-lane rural roadway with two southbound lanes, one northbound lane, a two-way left-turn lane throughout, and five-foot to seven-foot paved shoulders. Shoulder gutter is located along the paved shoulder of the southbound lanes from Sharon Lane to Nine Mile Road. The roadway will be widened and reconstructed to a four-lane urban roadway by adding a northbound lane with five-foot paved shoulders, also serving as a bike lane, and curb and gutter. The 10-foot shared-use path and six-foot sidewalk will continue. The study segment of State Road 297 is currently classified with two different access management classifications. State Road 297 from south I-10 to Sharon Lane is classified as Access Class III. State Road 297 from Sharon Lane to Nine Mile Road is classified as Access Class VI. The county road portion of 297 is not classified. The proposed access classification will be Class V. The table on this slide shows the differences between connections, directional median spacing, and full median or signal spacing between the various access classifications. The proposed median opening access types are shown on the concept plans on display at the in-person hearing and online. This public hearing meets the requirements of this classification change. The second project item we will look at are the intersection improvements at Pine Forest Drive, Nine Mile Road, and County Road 297A. A new signalized intersection is proposed at State Road 297 and Pine Forest Drive. A new left-turn lane will be constructed on the east portion of Pine Forest Drive. A newly constructed section of Pine Forest Drive will be constructed to the west. This new typical section will be shown later in the presentation. The improvements at State Road 297 and Nine Mile Road include construction of median U-turns or mutts both west and east of State Road 297 to improve traffic operations at this heavily congested intersection. Dual right lanes will be added for the eastbound right turn onto State Road 297 heading south. The existing westbound and eastbound dual left-turn lanes along Nine Mile Road will become through lanes. Later in this presentation, a traffic simulation will show how traffic will flow through this intersection. Nine Mile Road west of State Road 297 is a four-lane urban roadway with two northbound left-turn lanes and one southbound right-turn lane onto State Road 297. Widening and reconstruction will occur to the south. The roadway will be maintained as an urban roadway, but will have one additional eastbound through lane as part of the mutt. Two turn lanes will be added to the westbound lanes as part of the mutt. A second southbound right-turn lane onto State Road 297 will be constructed. Nine Mile Road east of State Road 297 is a four-lane urban roadway with one northbound right-turn lane and one southbound left-turn lane onto State Road 297. Widening and reconstruction will occur to the north and south. The roadway will be maintained as an urban roadway, but will have one additional westbound through lane as part of the mutt. Two turn lanes will be added to the eastbound lanes as part of the mutt. A second northbound right-turn lane onto State Road 297 will be constructed. A new roundabout is being proposed at the intersection of County Road 297 and County Road 297A to keep traffic moving efficiently and at lower, safer speeds. A right-turn lane will be added along southbound State Road 297 to westbound County Road 297A. The third project item we will look at are the side-street improvements along Pine Forest Drive East, Shelly Road, and Pine Forest Drive West and County Road 297A. In addition to the improvements along the main State Road 297 and County Road 297 corridor, several side-street improvements are proposed. Beginning at the southern end of the project, Pine Forest Drive East is a two-lane rural undivided road with 11-foot lanes and curb and gutter. Widening will occur to both sides to include a center left-turn lane. Shelly Road is also a two-lane rural undivided road. Pine Forest Drive West is currently an access street. Neither roadway has curb and gutter. Widening will occur to both sides to include a center left-turn lane and curb and gutter on both sides. The proposed roadways will have 11-foot lanes. County Road 297A is a two-lane rural undivided roadway with 12-foot lanes and five-foot paved shoulders. Widening will occur to both sides to include a center left-turn lane, curb and gutter on both sides, and a 10-foot multi-use path on both sides. This traffic simulation has been provided illustrating the no-build alternative, or no-improvements, on the far left, the addition of traffic signals only, in the center, and the preferred alternative, or proposed improvements, on the far right. The simulation shows projected traffic volumes for the future year 2045 for both the AM and PM peak hours. The full traffic simulation will be available on the TV screen at the in-person public hearing, and also available by scanning the QR code shown on the screen. An important element of this study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental effects were evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features, and documented in the environmental document. The resources listed are discussed further in the slides that follow. Based on the project evaluation, the FDOT has determined there are no adverse or disproportionate impacts to low-income, minority, or protected population groups by the proposed improvements. The right-of-way acquisition is expected to involve 71 parcels, either full or partial acquisitions. Three business relocations are anticipated. These are shown on the concept plans. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary relocation of families or businesses. On this project, we anticipate the relocation of three businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you are being moved and you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: If you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. The relocation specialist who is supervising this program is John Wallace. He will be happy to answer your questions and will also furnish you with copies of relocation assistance brochures. John Wallace, please stand, so that anyone who is involved in relocation on this project will know that they need to see you regarding their property. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires agencies to consider the effects of their actions on cultural resources. Twenty-one historic sites were identified. However, none of the sites are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, or NRHP. Thus, there are no adverse effects to cultural resources as a result of this project's improvements. The improvements proposed as part of this study resulted in minimal to no effects to protected species and their habitat. There are no wetland impacts associated with the proposed improvements. Effects to the physical environment were evaluated as a result of the proposed improvements. Ten of the 349 noise receptors documented traffic noise levels that approach or exceed noise abatement criteria. One noise barrier is anticipated to be installed as part of this project. It will be subject to engineering feasibility during the design phase. There are 20 potentially contaminated sites adjacent to the project, ranging from low to medium to high risk. The no-build or do-nothing alternative is also considered a viable alternative and will remain so for the duration of the study. Under this alternative, no improvements except routine maintenance would be made to State Road 297 or County Road 297 within the project corridor. This evaluation matrix represents the right-of-way acquisition requirements and the environmental impacts of the no-build and preferred alternative. The no-build alternative would have no costs associated with design or construction of the project, and there would be no disruption due to congestion. The no-build alternative would result in increased traffic congestion, user costs, and travel times. Under the build alternative, there are no significant impacts to social, natural, physical, or cultural resources. The preliminary cost of the project, including design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction phases, is approximately $113 million in today's dollars. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate input from this public hearing into our decision-making process. After the comment period has been closed and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PDNE document will be sent to FDOT Office of Environmental Management, which, based on the Memorandum of Understanding signed with the Federal Highway Administration on May 26, 2022, has approval authority on this project granting location and design concept acceptance. Anyone desiring to make a statement or present views regarding the location, conceptual design, or social and environmental effects of the proposed improvements will now have the opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways to provide your comments tonight, written or verbally. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing or directly to the court reporter at the comment table. Every comment method carries equal weight.
We would like to call upon the in-person participants who have requested to speak. If you would like to speak and have not yet completed it and turned in a speaker card, please raise your hand and we'll get one to you. As I call your name, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The first person to make a public statement is George Levy, and I apologize if I said that wrong.
concern is what is EFTAP going to do to assure maintenance schedule? And you see it in Nine Mile, you saw it in 20 Mile, and you see it at Three Mile Bridge, okay, amongst other things with contractor control. It should be less than this long, and what are you going to do to minimize having stuff dug up like in front and did it for a year? My other comment, and we'll have to talk to the contractor here, I'll have to talk to you about that, is the rainfall and drainage, and how is that going to be addressed and properly handled? Because I don't think the design, the way it is, is adequate. And the biggest thing, if you have a natural disaster rainfall, liquid rainfall, you could have some more shouts, and this is an infrastructure, and major infrastructure, that you want to keep maintaining even under worse conditions, and to assure... even under worst conditions, and to assure that not going to wash out the poor drainage, you know? And part of that is sure that you have adequate design for adequate rainfall. Okay? I have other comments, but my time, I think, is up or close to it.
I'm going to move over to this microphone, it seems to be working a little better. Is there, as I asked in the speaker cards, is there anyone else in person who would like to make a statement and get a speaker card? Is anyone else desiring to speak? That concludes our in-person comments. At this time, we're going to turn it over to our online moderator, Amanda Henning, and we'll call upon the online participants who requested a speaking registration. Amanda?
Thanks, Alan. We did not have anyone register ahead of time to provide online comment. However, if you are online with us tonight and would like to make a comment, please use the Raise Your Hand function in the GoToWebinar control panel. If you will raise your hand, I will be able to unmute you, and you can provide us with your comment this evening. Alan, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands, so I think that we are good to toss it back to you.
Thanks, Amanda. This concludes the public comment period. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments about this project. We may continue to submit written comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by December 27, 2022 and become part of the official public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to the FDOT project manager, Nicole Arant, whose contact information is shown on the slide and in the handout. You may also visit the project website listed on the screen to further view documents and submit comments. The exact transcripts of tonight's public hearing or proceedings, together with all written material, will save as part of the hearing record. All studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing, if they made part of the project decision-making process, will be available in the FDOT District Office in Chippewa, Florida for public review upon request. Thank you for attending the public hearing and providing your input on the project. Now that the time is 6:34, I hereby officially close the public hearing. Have a good evening, and please drive safely.